This meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. In accordance with chapter two thirty-one of public laws nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of July seventh twenty twenty-five was published in the Courier-News and Star-Ledger and placed on the borough's website and bulletin board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glendon E.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Verne.
Here.
All right, please stand for the salute and please remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic forged in stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I just want to ask for a moment of silence for the tragedy that's unfolded in Texas over the past few days. Our hearts reach out to those families affected. Thank you. Okay, motion for approval of the minutes of June sixteenth twenty twenty-five, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glendon E.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, departmental reports and notices, we have none. Committee reports, Mr. Conti.
Nothing to report this time.
Okay, Gina.
Uh, Somerville Rescue Squad reports a hundred and nine dispatches, sixty calls for emergency services and about twenty-five fire calls. And the balance was of RMAs, so refused medical assistance. Board of Health did not meet this month or last month.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Denis.
All I have is Environmental Commission will meet here tomorrow at seven P M. And I'll have an update next time.
Okay, Ms. Bonner.
I just have a short update about the Somerville Public Library. You may have noticed that some of the, or all of the events from last week and over the weekend were canceled or rescheduled. And that will go through this Wednesday, the ninth. They're doing some maintenance at the, at the library. But then, on July eleventh, there will be, you'll have the ability to explore Somerville, Somerville's local history collection. It, during open archives at three P M. In the young adult room. So you can explore Somerville's history with the help of somebody who works at the library. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Randy.
I have no reports at this time here.
And Roger.
Okay, two announcements from the Rec Commission. Both pools are now open daily from noon to six P M. Weather permitting. Registration is required, but it is free for all residents. You can head to the recreation page on our website. And the fall soccer league registration is open now for students entering grades one through eight. The deadline to register for the soccer league is August third. And again, that is on the recreation website.
Okay, all right, excellent. Next up, we have a discussion on the ladder truck purchase and the sale of the existing equipment. I understand we may be pushing that to the next meeting for the bulk of the discussion, but if, Roger, if you want to just kind of give everybody a heads up?
Certainly. So the, the Board of Engineers have been discussing getting, selling one of our engines, which would be engine four, to purchase a quint. A quint is a ladder and pump. So right now, you have an engine and you have a truck. This would be the complement of both of those. It's a seventy-five foot ladder, which would have a, which would be a first due piece of apparatus, because it can do both aerial work and pump work as necessary. The thought process is with the number of multi-story dwellings that we have now in the borough, that this would be a complimentary piece, as again, it would have a tank on it, would be able to pump, but it would also be able to have that aerial ladder. We do have our Seagrave, our tiller ladder, but in short order, that is expected to go out for re-surf, re- depending upon how we do what we need to do and depending upon what the fire department feels best, possibly just redoing the apparatus and getting it back into service. So having a second ladder in the borough, albeit not as tall as the Seagrave, would be a welcomed addition to the fleet of vehicles. So it would be getting rid of one piece and adding a second, or adding a second ladder to the fleet of vehicles that can also serve as a pump.
Okay, so that's kind of the overview, just to kind of get council-centered on thinking about this a little bit. Lots of, lots more to come, obviously finances being one of them. I think, you know, there's always been, for at least as long as I've been involved, there, and Rich, you may, you could probably bear this out. Every piece of apparatus has been on a twenty-year cycle. That's kind of the average of, of the life of a piece of equipment. And that was, it was very company-specific, that, that piece of equipment. And if I'm not mistaken, I think what, what the department is beginning to look at now is department-specific in reaction to what's happening in town. And, and I guess that's kind of like the over-archer of the discussion.
Yeah, so the department has been working, they had multiple Sundays over the past few months to cross-train drivers, so that everyone is capable, that is currently a driver, to be able to operate all pieces of apparatus. That's the end goal, at least, you know, through the department, is to make sure that if an engine is down, and you're, say you're a driver of engine three, and engine three is non-operational, but you're the only driver that may show up and you have to take engine one, that you're capable of pumping and functioning engine one. Or be at engine four right now, because we've got engine one, engine three, and engine four. Engine two is the old one that was just replaced by our new engine. So the goal is to have our drivers cross-trained so that they are capable to, to operate all pieces of apparatus and come to a more centralized concept that everyone is capable of doing that.
Okay. All right, so I think our chiefs are going to be here at the next meeting and we can have some, some more in-depth discussion on that. So, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glendon E.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Public portion is now open. Please state your name and address for the record and please address your comments to me. Mr. McAleavy.
Yes, sir. Frank McAleavy, one twenty-nine Bartine Street in Somerville here. I realize this is a summer meeting and I'm not going to say anything controversial. I've been told that I keep it easy. I just have a few comments that maybe you could ponder over time. The main comment is, are we doing any future planning? For example, the Borough Hall, it's not handicapped accessible. It's, well, probably ninety-five percent of the people that come through Borough Hall are there on business. And it's a beautiful building. I'm not saying get rid of it. I'm just saying that it, you know, it, it- the money that we spend on it, perhaps we could get someone else to bear that burden and look elsewhere for a Borough Hall that's more functional. That's one item. The Borough Barn, it's been almost four years since Tropical Storm Ida. What has been done? Are there any plans for the future? Or, you know, I haven't heard anything. At the time, it was all hell broke loose because there was no, everybody denied any type of responsibility. And somebody's responsible. And if you're, if you made a mistake, I understand it, but don't deny it. Let's see here. Organizational charts on the borough. I haven't really seen an organizational chart that tells me who is in charge of what, exactly what their responsibilities are from day to day. Is there a line of succession? In other words, God forbid if Kevin, something happened where he got a great job offer with somebody else or whatever, if he left us tomorrow, who's going to step in that knows what you do? Because I know you do a hell of a lot. But, you know, maybe there's too many hats on one head. That's been a problem over time where people, oh, they wear all these hats. But you can't have all the hats and in an emergency, you can't do everything. You have to be able to have people that are delegated that know what to do. Another little item that I have, I hope that somebody is looking at the fire department as far as staffing goes. You can put your head in the sand and say it's not a problem, but I see it every day. I still come around. I don't ride the apparatus anymore, but the apparatus during the daytime, oh, we got a great turnout. Look at all these people. You know how old they are? I wouldn't want those guys, well, I wouldn't want them dropping dead on me. They're probably sixty and above. We've got to come up with a plan to get more volunteers. Maybe team up with Ritten. I'm not, I don't know the answers. But somebody's got to look into this and try to figure it out, because someday we're going to get caught short. And if we don't look into it, oh, well, eggs on us. That's all. Happy summer.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment?
Terrible public speaking, sir.
Just your name and address for the record.
Kevin O'Neil, seventy-nine Eastern States Parkway. I wrote it down. Might be easier for me. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for letting me join the fire department. I just graduated firefighter one from the Somerset Academy. I'm honored to be able to serve my community. I have a couple of issues I would like to discuss. I will do my best to keep them brief, which they love me. The sidewalks that were installed by the water company in front of my house, they're deteriorating and falling apart. When I cut my grass, all of it's just getting thrown against my house.
Was it flaking up? Is that?
Yeah, it's all flaking up. I talked to Rodney about it and he said it's from the salt, but this started way before that. And it's throughout Eastern States. It's just not my corner. There's a pothole on Van Buren right next to my house by my driveway. It's been like that since I bought my house in twenty nineteen, but I'm told by my neighbors it's been like that longer. Nobody has dug it up. They filled it in eventually. The rocks, they used to fill it in, break away. And when cars run them over, they hit my vehicle, even if they're in the driveway. The pothole looks like it's caused by an underground leak from a water pipe. It's always filled with water, even when it's not raining, but I'm not a water guy. I wouldn't know. It's just what it looks like. As far as the firehouse is concerned, I just have two little things I'd like to bring up. I'd like to know why at the firehouse, we can't have a grill. I'm an elevated mechanic by trade. I deal with a lot of public service buildings. I'm involved with state inspections, internal audits and turnovers to the municipalities. I know firsthand that these firehouses and police stations, there are grills specifically for camaraderie amongst the firemen and police officers. I believe you're a put, I believe that if you're putting your life in someone's hands, you should know who they are on a personal level as well as a professional level. There's also other activities at these other places to promote camaraderie against, you know, with the other people. I've also noticed that the parking situation with the ESF building is not, does not accommodate volunteer first responders. When seconds can mean life or death, I believe it is in the public's best interest to have first responders be able to respond to their apparatus as fast as possible. The suggestion that I have is that there is a bus stop in front of the ESF building that can be moved across the street. The front of the building can be used for first responders and could be a no parking zone the rest of the time. At the West End Building, we were allowed to park in no parking until we were back from a call. I'm wondering if that can be done at the new building as well. I believe that is in the best interest of the public. If better accommodations were made so that first responders are able to park as close as possible to get to the building in order to suit up and get into the apparatus as fast as possible. The other thing that I know is being on the fire department is that some of our elevators lack a lot of inspections. Stuff is dilapidated. I talked to the head of the state. They have a problem with hiring people, keeping people, so that's a huge issue for them.
Are you saying municipal elevators or are you saying private?
Everything in town.
Well, the only elevator we have is a brand-new one that-
No, but in the town, they all have to be inspected by the state.
So those are private elevators?
Any elevator in the, in the town, yes, whether it's public, municipal, county, or private. They need to be inspected yearly and five years, full load tests and all that stuff. But that's, you know, it's not getting done. And there's some safety concerns that I see that I brought up to them. They've asked me to take pictures. And they send them, send a, an inspector back to write the violation up, but they're so shorthanded. I don't know if there's something where the borough might consider hiring somebody part-time or getting a third-party inspection company to come in. And that's usually offset by the private buildings to pay for their annual inspections. This also covers when we have a private inspection company, they do all the plan reviews. I think on the state level, I've seen a lot of plans just get pushed through and it's, you know, it's, they're not up to code. Like the one at the, the firehouse, the disconnect room was supposed to be accessible to the fire department, but it's on the police side that's locked up all the time. So is a controller. So if there's a problem there, I don't know how we're going to get to it. I mean, I'm certain, maybe there's Knox Box keys that we can get into it, but by code, they're supposed to be in a public access. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glendon E.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, so a bunch of different items. So Frank, first. For those that don't know, Frank McAleavy ran our emergency management office for, how many years, Frank? Fifteen years and did a fantastic job. So when Frank speaks, we listen. It's, so a few things. In terms of, of future planning in Borough Hall and the Borough Barn. We've had some discussions about the Borough Barn. Kevin and I have chatted about, you know, some possible relocation of some equipment. Some equipment has been relocated. The, the off-season equipment, we actually already have that out of there, so that we don't have to go through that process. What I can also tell you is whenever it gets foggy, I'm on the phone with OEM, making sure that Public Works is aware that, you know, there's a threat of rain, where we monitor. We were on the phone this morning talking about it as well. So, so we're monitoring and we're trying to figure out that best scenario. As you know, land in Somerville is, is not that prevalent, open land. So, but there are some opportunities that, you know, we've had some soft discussions over the last year or two with, with some folks. It's, it's not over yet. It's not done, so. Borough Hall's a bigger issue. You know, we just got into the, into the new emergency services complex, so we're kind of still feeling our way there. PD should hopefully be over there very soon as well. And then once that is done, then we can start to look at, at the future. Whether Borough Hall's included in that discussion or not, I, I couldn't tell you that, Frank, right now. It, it is. It's a beautiful building. It's a signature building for Somerville. Is it going to go somewhere? During my tenure, probably not. But, you know, somebody else's tenure, it may. I don't, I just, I can't answer that for you. Org charts, we do have org charts and we're actually currently in discussion now about, you know, repositioning some things to, to address what, exactly what you're talking about, to ensure that there's coverage so that it doesn't fall on the shoulders of all of one person. Because that, that is, it's a challenge. And as you know, we run on a shoestring budget. You know, everybody up here, you know, for, for decades have been whittling the pencil. And we do a whole lot with a whole little and, and we continue to do it that way. It's just the nature of this municipality. Big difference with the emergency services complex, that's the first foray into something a little bit larger. And then FD staffing, it's something that, that the chiefs will monitor. That's, you know, we've had some discussions about how you supplement and, and increase the roles of volunteerism, both there and in the squad as well, because I think they're synonymous. And it's trying to encourage people who, you know, either have lived in town for a long time or, or new residents in town and getting them to understand it's, it's kind of nice to help your neighbor. And, and, you know, as you know, it does go in ebbs and flows. You know, the squad's seeing a big influx right now, whereas they, for the past few years, they had a drain. And now all of a sudden, they have, they have an influx of folks, which is great. So it is kind of an ebb and flow. So Mr. O'Neil, a few things. One, let's get, Kevin, if we can get Rodney out there to take a look at the sidewalks. I know what he's talking about because that is an issue with a number of the sidewalks that have been redone all over town.
Mayor, if I may, I-
Hang, hang on one second. I'm not done yet. And it, it's, it's something that I think we need to address with the contractors. Was it the water company that did it or you don't know?
I believe it was the water company.
All right, well, we'll find out. We'll know, we'll find out who it was. We'll take a look at it. And then also the pothole, it's at the corner of Van Buren and Eastern States?
Yeah, it's towards the hospital, a little bit, maybe a hundred feet.
All right, can, can you have Rodney's crew out there tomorrow morning, as long as it's not raining? If it's raining, they may have to wait. But if it's, if it's dry weather, let's get them out there. If there's water in the hole from, not from rain, then, then we've got a water issue. But let's, let's check it out and let's address it, because I guess from two thousand nineteen to today, that's, that's a bit of time. So we'll, we'll get that addressed. A lot of your other issues, I'm going to defer that to the Board of Engineers. That's really something that the chiefs, if they have an issue with anything that you brought up, whether it's parking, whether it's a grill, whether it's elevators, because they're the ones who have to deal with it, that really should be addressed from your Board of Engineers. You should be bringing that to the Board of Engineers. And then the engineers can bring it to us or through Roger to us as well. But those really are fire department, firematic issues. And, and that's really up to the Board of Engineers to determine whether it warrants their discussion with the Borough Council on that or not. It's not to push you off. It's just I want to follow the protocols that, you know, we, we have a Board of Engineers for a reason. And, and that's the reason that, that's part of the reason, not the reason, but that's part of the reason. They, they can, they can vet those, those items. But I thank you for coming out and pointing some of that out. Do you want to divert?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so before we go to consent resolutions, we'll dial back because we have-
I did want to make a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gina. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, Mr. O'Neil, I am aware of what you're speaking of and I have spoken to Rodney about it. It occurred on Grant Avenue as well, where I live, and not just at my house, but several different places. Also happened on the other side of town, in the Cadillac Drive area. Rodney is aware of it. I, I think the way it explained to me was that he was coming, testing this patch that they would put over it so that the flaking would stop and we would have, you know, solid sidewalks and driveways. It's, in, in most places, it appears to be on the apron. But I, I think the whole thing with top line is we can't do anything about it. It's too late. And why it happened a couple of years after the fact, I, I don't think it was salt either, because it was good for a couple of years and then, and then it started flaking. I, I don't know. But I have discussed it with him.
Thank you. All right, we'll check that out.
Yeah, we, we can, we, we can speak to our engineers, see if there's a sealing solution that may be appropriate for that application.
That's what he spoke about, yeah.
Okay.
But, but I think we need to make attention to it and remind them to get it done.
Great, thank you.
All right, so we have Chief Stately and Chief Rodriguez here. If you guys want to kind of maybe come up to the front, we'll, we'll dial back in the agenda and I'm going to go over to Roger to kind of maybe give you a heads up as to what he covered. And then we can chat a little bit further.
So what I told the, the council is that the fire department is looking to sell engine four in an effort to procure another piece that would greatly benefit the borough, an apparatus that would provide us with a second aerial, as well as be a first, could possibly a first due piece, that it is a pump, that it can carry water and can meet a lot of the different needs in various parts of the borough. As we, as we continue to discuss this, the borough, the council just needs some more information on to what it is and how we plan to implement.
Just push your button. Yep.
So the Board of Engineers looked at a lot of different options, even replacing the current tiller that we have, which does require two drivers to operate and get it out the door. We also looked at a mid-mount platform as well as a rear-mount platform with the current building going up in town, the apartments, the parking issues that, not only that we see, but residents see as well. They're just as long as engine four is currently. We have a lot of drivers that will not, they opt not to drive engine four compared to the other two engines, which are a lot shorter. And then our call volume itself is also increasing. We have more fires in town. The apartments make it harder to get around. So selling engine four to offset the cost of a ladder truck, you know, as you stated before, there is staffing issues from time to time. We have had a couple of new members here and there, but during the daytime, it's still, you know, harder to get out the door with, you know, all of our pieces. We can get one or two out, but especially when volunteers are away for Fourth of July weekend, one piece can get out the door and adequately staff and make sure that the residents are safe as well as our members.
How old is the truck?
It's brand-new. They're talking about the one we're looking at?
Yeah, the one you want to get rid of?
It's a twenty-eighteen Pierce Velocity.
That's engine three?
Engine four.
Engine four, okay, all right. Yeah, and, and it's all predicated on getting the value out of engine four from a financial standpoint. Because without that value, it, it, the, the, the money that would have to be outlaid by the borough in the hopes that it would come back, that plays into it. What, what I find interesting, and tell me if, if I'm wrong, is, so we've always had this twenty-year cycle. And I look at it and, you know, Rich may say I'm all wet, but I think a lot of that was driven by the companies. The companies needed a new piece of apparatus every twenty years. The lifespan of it, the technology, well, the technology is changing. The lifespan's changing. Lifespan's probably shortening, I would think, just because they're not built as well. But the technology is enhanced, but the technology changes so rapidly now that trying to stay up with it is, is a little more difficult. So am I wrong in saying that the department's look, beginning to look at it, instead of just a standard twenty-year cycle of, this is when we get a new piece of equipment, you're beginning to look at it from, instead of a company's standpoint, a department's standpoint, at a municipal need standpoint? Is that, so that's, is that the general thinking?
Yes, it's, it's, the town has drastically changed. We're building up higher. Like I said, parking's getting tighter. The buildings are getting tighter. So altogether, it's a completely change from each individual company being separated throughout town to one single complex that's here now, the emergency services facility, that we're all responding out of. Previously, you had, you know, engines responding and they had, didn't have adequate staffing when they got on scene. Now they're responding with adequate staffing to get to these scenes.
Yeah. So, and a lot of it, I think, is going to come down to numbers and cents. And, you know, and I've heard numbers anywhere from six- And, you know, and I've heard numbers anywhere from six hundred thousand to two hundred thousand for Engine Four, getting that on the, on the secondary secondhand market. I, I don't, I have no idea. That's, it's just the numbers that, that are kinda floating around. I, I think before we even kinda go further in the discussion, I think we need to see that amortized. So, so we have how many years left on, paid, to pay Engine Four?
There's, there's a hundred and sixty-three thousand due.
All right.
Hundred and sixty-three, about a hundred and sixty-four thousand due on the bond that, that, for that purchase. So that would have to be paid off.
Yeah, so I think we have to, we have to see those, those finances. We have to see what the, the cost of a new piece of equipment. I, I understand, I think everybody understands what, what you're trying to do. It's just whether it's financially feasible or not at, at this point. What's the cost of the new piece? What do we still have to pay off on the existing piece? And then what we could potentially get as a trade-in value or a sale value on that and see, and in different ranges, is it two hundred, is it four hundred, is it six hundred? And see what those numbers play out to be. Because conceptually, I get it. Financially, it's, that's, that's, that's the sell.
All those numbers have been provided to the borough for over a month now.
Well, it's, this is just appearing on the, on, on this that-
Well, what is the, what is the sale price?
Of the-
On Engine Four?
Currently?
What is the projected?
It, it varies. It was, we had someone reach out that they, their budget was only two hundred thousand dollars, so we were just seeing what we were selling it for. E-one gave a trade-in value of about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then there was another fire department in North Jersey that was interested, but then backed out.
So we gotta see those numbers. I mean, it's, it's kinda, it's, it's, you know, this is coming to the council cold. We're, we're, we're seeing this now, so-
Originally I had, so originally we, we had spoke, the chiefs and I and, and councilman Verma, because this didn't come up during the budget hearing. So, so the thought process was, was to come, come to almost like a neutral number in the sense that maybe the, the council would have to come up with a hundred thousand dollars, you know, to, to do that, which is certainly doable. But, but you're right. I think that, I think, because I, I wasn't sure of what the trade value was. I know that there has been, we, there's been an attempt to try to sell it. But yeah, based on that information.
Yeah, it's a best-case, worst-case scenario. Without that, I mean, we're kinda just, we, we don't, we don't have, we, we can't, we don't have numbers.
And what is the cost of a new one?
Of the current one that we're looking at is about one point four million dollars. A new ladder truck is about two point eight million. And a platform, rear-mount or mid-mount is just over two million, about two point two, two point four.
Yeah.
And the one point four is for the, what is it called, a gint, grand?
Quint.
Quint?
Quint, yeah, it's a street stick ladder with a pump on it.
And, and that was actually supposed to be what Engine Four is now, right?
That's what they were looking at.
Yeah, they were looking at that.
A study that the borough paid for and provided by the fire department actually recommended a rear-mount street stick.
Yeah, that's, you know, and that's why I'm not adverse to the idea. The concept of it works. I mean, I understand it. It's the finances behind it. We can't, we can't just say, ah, it's great, it's a great idea, let's go. It's, you know, we're, we're, we're not fully into the new emergency services building yet. We, we have to understand what those finances are before I think the council can make a, a, a fair judgment.
Absolutely. And on the contrary, you also have a, a 2018 engine that's just sitting there as well because drivers don't, opt not to drive it. So if it's sitting there and not going out on calls, what benefit is it to the residents as well as the firefighters in the borough?
No, I hear you. I hear you.
Would the, would the council consider, listening to the chief, would the council consider, this is a little outside the box, serving as a bank for another municipality? So if municipality wanted the, the new, the old apparatus for, I don't know, six hundred thousand, if that's the market rate, I don't know what it is. But their budget costs for two hundred thousand, would the municipality finance that for them?
Would we hold the note?
Well, we've, we've held the note for other things like Hillsborough and things like that. So, yeah, so that's basically it. I, I'm not sure we can for a fire truck.
Yeah, I know.
I'm just trying to think of ways to, you know-
I, I like the creative thinking. I don't know if we should get involved in that, in that end of things.
So the, so do we have a pumper truck as well or is the 2018 truck a pumper? I thought it was a ladder.
The 2018 Pierce is a engine, so it has a pumper on it, there's no ladder on it. Our only ladder in town is a tiller, which is over its twenty-year mark, which is recommended by NFPA to replace it around twenty years.
So would we get rid of both of those vehicles then? Would that make it more flush to purchase a new one?
The tiller and the Engine Four?
No, we'd have to get a new tiller, right? In order to reach the high-
The, so the tiller is, has mainly a stainless steel body and chassis on it. It's, it's probably cost beneficial for the borough to refurbish it versus replacing it.
But we still need that truck.
It has a hundred-foot ladder compared to a seventy-five foot. So I think ultimately you're either going with a larger ladder than we have now anyway and you'd be paying two point two to two point eight million dollars.
To replace?
To replace it.
And the seventy-five, see, we can't buy a quint at a hundred feet?
You can, you can, they're about one point six million.
So if we got rid of two vehicles and got a taller quint, would, would we have more assets towards it?
You're gonna get pennies on the dollar for the tiller. It's a twenty-plus-year apparatus at this point. So the cost of selling that off isn't gonna offset the cost. Financially, I feel like the borough's more feasible to refurb it if we went that route.
Okay.
Yeah, recertify the ladder and, yeah. Well, I, I think before we can even really get into it, I think we have to, we, we've gotta see some numbers. And, and, and then maybe have you come back and then we can get into, you know, the ins and outs. And, and I think maybe even, you know, and I know we go on inspection day every year to look at the equipment, but I think, you know, show, advising all of council, so the public can see it as well. What, what is the apparatus that we have? What types of apparatus do we have? What does that apparatus do and what is it intended to cover? So that we can, we can have a, a broad discussion, not just at this table, but allow the public to understand it as well. Makes sense?
Yes.
All right.
Am I getting, am I getting this right? That there's a million-dollar difference right now between the trade-in value and the purchase price of the new one? Is that like?
It depends on, so the trade-in value, yes.
Yeah.
On the trade-in value. But that same engine that we bought in twenty eighteen-
Or less?
Well, the same engine that we bought in twenty eighteen, a company bought one similar, same body style, same size for one point three million dollars currently.
Okay. Just wanna understand a little bit more around, put a box around what we're talking about here.
The, the only other variable was that, you know, I guess three years ago, the fire department ordered a truck and that's how long it took to come in this year, right? So the idea of the quint was, was more quickly accessible. So it wouldn't be a three-year period.
It's on the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's currently-
It's on the lot.
Yeah, it's currently at absolute. Right now, I've talked to four other different manufacturers and they're three-plus years for an apparatus to be placed in order today.
Yeah.
So this can't wait till the new budget season?
This will be long gone before that.
And the thing to think about, and, and as was said by Kevin, is that with the purchase of the new Engine One, Somerville kept getting knocked back how many times?
It was signed in two thousand twenty, nineteen, we started discussing it because ours was due in twenty twenty. We didn't sign anything until twenty twenty-one. And it just came into the house, what, March?
Well, was that part of the COVID backlog?
No. No. It had something to do with the storms that took effect that, that got backlogged. But other than that, that was only because of the fact that we waited to sign off on it. There was a bunch of delays, whether we wanted independent steering and maintenance got involved and stuff like that. But other than that, what, that, those two months, it took us, that backtracked us almost a year and a half.
But if we put it off until the new budget year, you're saying it would be a three-year wait anyway?
Three-year wait and the price would increase significantly.
Well, well, the assumption is you're gonna be custom at that point, right? Opposed to getting off the lot.
Right.
Yep. So, so, you mean, just, i- i- it appears that the, the existing, the, the quint that they're talking about is, is available off a lot. Where, where anything else after that period of time will be considered a custom purchase, which would just take, you know, three years or whatever.
So what, what timeframe are we looking at to make it, to make a decision before the quint would be gone?
So Absolute, Absolute Fire said that they have to make their first payment on July twenty-first. So they're not selling it right now, they're holding it, pending what's coming.
They're holding it for us?
They're, they're just holding it for us. They have a lot of, they have a lot of interest in the ladder truck, but they were just holding it based off a letter of intent that was signed by the borough just to hold it so it wasn't sold by these, to these other agencies.
We issued a-
So it's not a binding agreement?
No, we actually issued a letter of interest saying that, you know, if we could put together this package at some point, we'd be interested in, in, in making that acquisition off, off, off the state contract at, at the set price. We've actually released that letter of interest as some, you know, a couple of months ago, just so that we wouldn't get caught in a position of which the vendor, you know, turned down the order or something, that, that would put us in a difficult position. So we, we did release that. Obviously, we have a relationship with that company. We use them for, we've used them for many years. You know, so, so that relationship is, that, that's what's currently existing.
Any other questions? All right, let's run some numbers. Let's see what we got. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right, next up, we have consent resolutions. Any to be pulled off for further discussion?
One eighty-eight, please.
Okay. All right. One eighty-two, authorizing and directing the planning board of the borough of Somerville to examine whether blocks and lots as listed, shown on the official tax map of the borough, meets the statutory criteria for an area in need of redevelopment, specifically a non-condemnational redevelopment area pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law and included in the West Main Street redevelopment area. One eighty-three is rejecting all bids for janitorial maintenance. One eighty-four is approving the release of the cash guarantee to Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. One eighty-five is approving new wrecker and towing license for twenty-five, twenty-six. One eighty-six is authorizing the sale of surplus property, Ford F-250, three fifty pickup bed through municipal. One eighty-seven is authorizing payment for the five hundred dollar application fee for a grant from the hazardous discharge site remediation fund to the NJEDA for remediation of certain sections of the Somerville landfill. One eighty-nine, amending the zoning permit application, modifying regulations for existing driveways and decks. One ninety, approving tax overpayment refund for fourteen Demond Place. One ninety-one is eliminating handicap parking space in front of thirty-six West Cliff. One ninety-two is approving a shared services agreement for a shared municipal court between Bridgewater and Somerville and authorizes the mayor municipal clerk to execute the agreement. One ninety-three is authorizing the placement of a handicap parking space on Walnut Street. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verma.
Yes.
All right, one eighty-eight is approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant contract with the NJDOT twenty-twenty-six state aid grant program for road improvements, including South Midaw Street and a portion of Washington Place. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Yep. Roll call.
Oh, could, but I'm glad you brought it up because I did have a question. I thought it unusual that we have a grant and a contract all in the same resolution. So what work are we gonna, what, what work are we proving?
The, the state of New Jersey, this is a template resolution and that's the way it reads in that resolution. This project actually has money from another grant. I should say from a prior grant. This is an additional grant for that project. The project is about five hundred thousand dollars and we, we have about two hundred thousand dollars towards that project. But the reason that reads that way is exactly, it's in the template of the state's resolution.
So we have five hundred thousand dollars for paving of the street, is that what it is?
No, we have about two hundred thousand dollars. It includes both paving, driveway aprons, curbs, handicap ramps and, and the milling in the paving. And, and also endless drainage.
So we're doing this, the street for five hundred thousand and we've got a grant to offset it at two hundred thousand, is that?
Currently, and this, this, this is an additional request for funding.
For, for the same street?
That's correct.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. With a recusal, roll call.
Teresa Bonner is recused. Andrew Conti?
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Verma.
Yes.
All right, bills and vouchers, Roger.
I make a motion to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of one million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verma.
Yes.
All right, and Gina, I will ask for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?